Good evening. I'd like to call the committee of the whole budget meeting of November 27, 2019 to order. I'd like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit doors through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given, and if resistance is required, please see the clerk. So tonight, the clerk in charge is Rebecca Mackay. Rebecca, can you make yourself known? There she is. So, once we've evacuated town hall, we'll please gather in the front parking lot outside. Please note, Town Lincoln Committee and Council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. I would like to thank the public for attending this evening, and I just want to remind everyone of our rules for engagement to please be respectful while others are speaking, and please refrain from clapping. Please remember to silence all cellular devices. Roll call of council this evening. The mayor is at a meeting. Counselor Timmers is Malad, and Counselor McPherson is in Costa Rica. Sent me a lovely picture of him poolside today, reading his budget notes. So, bravo to him. I hope he had one of those lovely drinks with the umbrellas in it. Are there any declarations of interest this evening? I see none. So, tonight is an introduction to the operating budget. We'll spend most of tonight looking at water and wastewater rates, which are looking good, offering an important and critical service to our residents at affordable rate. And this is a result of us taking a very diligent look at water wastewater and infrastructure renewal and rates a few years ago, and getting to a point where the system is almost self-sustainable. And we are the envy of a lot of the other municipalities in the region that are struggling with water and wastewater and have crumbling infrastructure. The usage or consumption rates do not change for our residents, but rather the fixed cost that includes maintenance expense of the infrastructure resulting in only five cents a day, an increase to your water and wastewater rates. The user fee bylaw is in front of us also this evening. This is an essential funding source generating revenue and cost recovery for the fee for services we provide to the community and business sectors. If we've heard him say it once, we've heard him say it 100 times, we don't have an expense problem, we have a revenue problem. Mr. Kerkopolis? Lastly, tonight, we'll set the context of our 2020 operating budget. It's a growth-forecasted budget, much like the capital. Staff will highlight why growth is an important factor contributing to the context of providing mandated services. Significant infrastructure investment in our community drives our operational costs related to maintenance and service delivery. Don't know how many of you caught the news last night, and then it was on today about snow clearing and the jumping of insurance rates for private contractors. Some of them last year were paying $10,000 to $15,000. This year, they're paying $60,000. And this is all a direct effect that if they clean municipal properties, there's a slip-and-fall hazard, and they know municipalities have deep pockets. So, it's a vicious circle that's been created. Significant infrastructure investment in our community drives our operational costs related to maintenance and service delivery. Staff will present trends and pressures impacting the operational budget. And we'll examine the department budget drivers in anticipation of December 2nd meeting where the department budgets will be presented. As we hear the information before us tonight, I encourage members of council to focus on our continued incremental investment that is needed to build a strong foundation for Lincoln. Okay. So, now, we are going to enter our statutory public meeting. So, members of the public present are advised that this evening's statutory public meeting is being convened pursuant to the provisions of the Municipal Act 2001 and the Town of Lincoln's Notice bylaw for the purpose of considering comments from the public with respect to the proposed 2020 water and wastewater rates and the 2020 budget. Council is proposing to set the rates charged by the Town of Lincoln for the treatment and distribution of water and the collection of treat and treatment of wastewater and to establish a 2020 budget. Rates collected under the water and wastewater rate bylaw shall fund operating expenses and capital expenditures associated with the town's water and wastewater system. Once all comments have been received, the public meeting will be concluded, and council will consider any public comments during the regular agenda section of tonight's agenda. Once consideration is concluded, the items may be referred to a future council meeting for final consideration and adoption. Should approval of the 2020 water and wastewater rates or budget be deferred by council, no further notice shall be required if a public statement is made at that meeting declaring that the matter has been deferred, and the municipality now intends to adopt or amend the budget at a later council meeting specified in the public statement. So, staff will be providing a presentation this evening with respect to water and wastewater budget, and Teri Trawala will be taking us through that, our Director of Finance and Administration.
Good evening, council. I'm going to bring you through the water and wastewater budgets. So, I'll start with the proposed water budget. I'll just highlight the main points. Under revenues, we have our rate charges, which, as you mentioned, were previously set. This include this line item includes our payout to the region who provides the water. They've put forth a request for a 5.5% increase. It's going to their council tomorrow. If that passes, then this line here, rate charges, will need to go up, well, down. It'll go down. And then, the amount that we can transfer to reserves, which is the second bottom line, that will also go down. So, we'll have less rates to keep for ourselves, which means less that we can put into our reserve for our capital budgets. There's this, the third from bottom line is interfunctional charges. That is the support that's given from other town departments. We increased it by 2% this year, which is the average of inflation. Moving on to the wastewater budget, one of the, the very first line is our grants, which are provided from the region. So, we, we're working on our 2020 region grant applications right now, but all of those are going to be related to our capital projects. The one thing that could change on this line is that we had a $360,000 grant from the region for 2019 that was provided in year. We might be carrying that project over, which will just show up on that line. But, and the rest of the budget is pretty well like the water budget. We have our transfers to reserve or from reserves, and interfunctional charges, which is the in-year, sorry, the town departments providing support for the budget. Those are the line items for the budget. What's in the user fee bylaw is the actual water and wastewater rates. These were approved in 2016 or 2015 for use between 2016 and 2020. The variable rate was approved to not change over that time period. Only the base fixed rate would change, which contributes to the capital projects, the infrastructure. We are in, within 2020, we're going to be undertaking a financial sustainability review for the water and the wastewater systems. This will, we'll bring back to council to approve and endorse. It will recommend the rates for the next three to six years, and it'll also bring us in line with our other water and wastewater reporting requirements. If you take a look at the increase on households, the increase comes to about $20 for a year, which is only five cents a day, and that's three or four Starbucks coffees, depending on the size that you get. So, it's providing good value for the dollar on that one. Those are all the slides I had, the main highlights of the water and wastewater budget, and if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
Okay. Teri, thank you very much. And if committee will remember too, we made that functional change last year where we lowered the wastewater rate in the summer because of people watering the grass, washing their cars. So, your water rate is X, and your wastewater rate is two times X. So, we thought, you know, and to encourage residents when we're doing infrastructure projects that if trees go in and grass goes in and various sundry items like that, we encourage them to water them so they'll catch and take growth. So, any questions on water and wastewater? Counselor McLaughlin, start us off, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just curious, like, looking at these reports and, you know, the approved budget amount and the restated budget amount, these are exactly the same numbers. Like, can you explain how, how you, how they're exactly the same? There's no variance?
So, through the chair, the restated column is more so for the other departments. The restated column is when we're making changes to expenditures in between line items to make it easier for you to follow. We restate the budget so that the 2020 budget change, it reflects where things are going. For example, if we, if we were contracting out a, a service, and then we decided we wanted to bring it in-house, there would be a variance between the salaries, wages, and benefits line and the operational services and supplies line. We would do an adjustment in that restated column so that it reflects apples to apples. Within the water and the wastewater budget, they didn't have any changes that they were doing, so there's no adjustments in there. But, the table itself is the same format that you'll see in the other town departments.
Okay. And then, looking at this proposed water budget through you, Chair Patrieva, I see in the several questions regarding these lines, user fees and service charges, you know, 2019 is $25,000, and this, this year, we're only forecasting $502. How, what happened there? How do we, all of a sudden, drop that?
Drop the user fees?
How did the, how did the predicted user fees and service charges go from $25,000 to $500?
No, that's a change, Mike.
Yeah.
Counselor, that's a change. So, it's actually up $502.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I misread that. And then, and one other thing was the administrative expenditure from 97.5 to 127.7, a change of 30. Can you explain some of the, the needs there that...
So, I...
It's about a 30%.
Didn't bring up my, my detailed sheet, but administrate, or, sorry, operate, administrative through the chair includes training, consulting, legal, all of those kind of things. So, there are various projects that they do that would feed into there. Also, the staff require a lot of training. They're bumping up in their levels. So, we have level, we have operators in training. We have level one, level two, level three. And so, as they get, go higher, then they require more expensive training as well. We have, I believe, three, level three nows, whereas before, we didn't have any level threes.
Okay. So, my understanding is that this is to ensure the future of our classification for our inspectors and our water, water employees.
Yeah. And Counselor McLaughlin, too. If you remember, the extension of the Fourth Avenue Water Main and the coming out of Prudential, so we're going to go from a, we're going to change classes on the water system. So, we're going to go from a class two to a class three, David. So, we need our inspectors or our operators to be brought to that higher level. So, that's the $30,000 on the training, like Teri spoke to. So, we need those class three operators, and then everyone's going to come up to be able to look after each other, kind of job share, things like that, rotational. So, we've got more than one person at that. So, it's, it's a great spend for the value, and we need to, we deem to ensure that with the change in class of the water system.
And, thank you, Chair, and thank you. I only ask that because it's, it's a percentage-wise, relative to the numbers. It is a substantial jump, and, you know, just, just asking a question that a typical tax...
Yeah, no, no, no worries. No worries, Counselor. And you're going to see that later on in Mr. Kerkopolis's presentation tonight, that we can't lose sight of, and we can't get blinded by increases, percentage, and, and numbers. So, you're going to see big swings on small numbers. You know, having been an economist at StatsCan, it was always, you know, easy to grab headlines by writing, you know, 30% increase. But, you know, 30% of nothing is, is, you know, apparent by a small change. So, we've got to really drill down on those, and then it's our job to talk to those residents to say, hey, you know, 30%, it might be $10,000 on a $1.295 million budget. So, it's up to us to steer them in the right direction.
Thank you for the explanation.
You are welcome.
And did not see the parentheses on that.
That's okay. I did the same first read-through. Okay. I see no further comments. So, the public meeting shall now commence. Thank you very much, Teri. No written submissions have been received regarding the proposed water and wastewater rates or the budget. So, are there any persons present wishing to address council regarding the proposed 2020 water and wastewater rates or budget? Please come forward and state your name and spell your surname for the record. Are there any persons present wishing to address council regarding the proposed 2020 water and wastewater rates or budgets? And I've got to do it a third time. In accordance with the Municipal Act, are there any persons present wishing to address council regarding the proposed 2020 water and wastewater rates or budget? Okay. Any questions from committee? There being no other persons present to address members of council, I declare this public meeting closed. Are there any questions from council? Okay. So, I will require a mover to receive and file presentation 2020 water and wastewater budget as information. Counselor Russell is the mover. All in favor? All opposed? I see none, and that is carried. Delegations, we have none. Consent agenda, we have none. So, now, we're delving into the regular agenda. We are now considering item 7.1 FN-22-19, 2020 Proposed Fee and Charges and Draft Bylaw. Are there any questions from council? Is Mr. Kerkopolis any presentation on this part, or is this just going to be a question and answer?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Definitely a question and answer. I know Teri wanted to make some opening comments on the user fees and bylaw report, and then we can definitely take any questions, Council may have.
Okay. Great.
So, through the chair, you'll see in front of you the user fee report, which the appendix outlines all of the changes to the user fee bylaw. You can use that to review what we're actually changing in order to ask questions about it. We normally bring this to council within the new year, so within the first quarter. This year, we wanted to bring it with budget so that we could get it approved with the budget that were, that goes along with it, and it will allow us to implement the fees as of January 1st instead of the March 31st that we normally do.
Okay. So, questions from committee? Counselor McLaughlin, go ahead.
Thank you, J.D. Thank you, Chair Patrieva. Just through you to staff. Regarding the ice time rental rates, what I'm particularly looking at is the daytime rates and the competitiveness of that. Been hearing from some people that the daytime rates are substantially higher than neighboring communities, and I'm just wondering, I think we may be too late for this year, but if, is there a possibility we can look at that in the future, also gauge the amount of use that we are renting out during the daytime? If I could get a response or some feedback?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. Yes, absolutely. We can look at that. Our, our non-prime is a bit higher than our comparators. We don't have the historical, or I don't have the historical information how the original rate was set, but it's been increased by about 2% year over year. So, it may have been that it was much higher early on and then just continues to be higher. But, we can look at that, and we can certainly look at whether or not that's impacting the bookings for that non-prime time, and if those users may potentially be going elsewhere because of that fee.
Thank you. And where I'm going with it is, is the, is our marketing, is our, is our ability to market the ice, is our ability to rent, our competitiveness, as opposed to just doing the standard 2% to 5% increase without actually looking at whether or not we're leaving vacant ice on the table. That's too much vacant ice on the table. That's...
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. Yes, absolutely. We'll take a look at that, and we'll have staff look at the, the usage and the uptake and analyze that and get some data even from this year ending.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLaughlin. That's a great question, because this goes back to the discussion we had around the junior hockey team coming to town. And we, we've got two facilities, and, you know, neighboring municipalities charge half of the rate we do for morning ice. So, the typical question is, if you're paying the same rate for 6:00 a.m. or 6:00 p.m., when are you going to book that ice? 6:00 p.m. So, if you drop the user rate in the morning, you're going to fill up that time, you're going to open up prime time spots for adults at a higher rate. So, there's, there's, there's a revenue opportunity here. So, it was a, it was a good question. Look forward to Ms. McKay bringing us back that info, because back in the file on that junior team, there was comparable ice rates from across the municipality, and we didn't raise it right off the bat because of the decrepit state of the Lincoln Center when ice rates were comparatively high compared to the other centers. So, we would have boosted, and we incrementally went up. But, there's an opportunity here. So, good question, Counselor. Any other questions? Counselor Manjima?
Thank you, Chair Patrieva. My question is about, so, we're approving, or this is a public meeting tonight, will this bylaw be coming back to us to the next? No. Okay. I see the C.A.O. responding, no. So, my question then, further to that, is that if we wanted to make changes to fees during the year, how would we go about that?
Ms. McKay or Teri? Okay.
Through the chair. If any user fees need to be updated throughout the year, we can bring back an amendment to the bylaw, and you can approve it at that time.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Reimer.
Thank you, Chair Patrieva. Just a question about inspection fees, maybe through to Director Dale. Just related to what we were talking about the other night about with cannabis and trying to recoup some of our, some of our, you know, time that we spend on that. Is any, like, does it come through anything here? Like, if we, just like, for instance, if we have an inspection of a piece of property, like, are we able to charge them through this? Or how, I guess maybe it's not related to budget, but it's kind of related. I just didn't know how that, how that's going to work in here, or maybe we don't know yet.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So, I guess maybe I can compare building inspection fees versus bylaw enforcement fees, and maybe any fees associated with cannabis operations. So, building inspection fees are covered in your building permit application, so those are collected as part of the building permit process. When, if it's a bylaw enforcement issue, we really can't charge ins, I mean, there are some inspection fees we can charge for, but a lot of times, when you're doing bylaw enforcement, it's very difficult to recover your fees other than taking somebody to court and issuing fines, those types of things. In regards to the cannabis stuff, we are looking at, as an example, licensing, and we haven't actually determined what those fees will be. So, that may be something that comes back as an amendment to the fees and charges bylaw.
Okay. Thank you. So, we would probably, or maybe try and keep track then of our cannabis hours, and try and make our licensing, if I'm reading this correctly, our licensing kind of reflect that. Does that make sense?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Probably, yeah. I think what it'll be is, is we'll do, do our best to trying, you know, estimate what the, what the fee should be, and, and as you know, with all fees, they're monitored on a yearly basis, and if need be, adjustments are made to fees and charges each year.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair Patrieva.
Thank you, Counselor Reimer. Counselor Brene?
Thank you, Counselor Patrieva. So, yeah, my question was also under the bylaw there where it says inspection fee, and I was, I was trying to understand what that inspection fee would entail, because it's going up, I guess significantly, from $92 to $115, $22. So, through you, Mr. Chair, maybe to Ms. Dale, could you, could you give us an example of what that inspection fee would entail? Is that, is that when a bylaw has to go out to, to an event, to a noise complaint? Is that an inspection fee, or just what is an inspection fee when it relates to bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. There are some situations where maybe you're dealing with a property standards issue, that type of a bylaw, where there could be a, so you go out and, for example, there's in order to comply, you know, they said they've done the works. You go out and you do inspections, and they actually haven't done the work. So, in cases like that, where you're called out to do an inspection, we can recover the costs or inspection fees. So, that would be like one example.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Director Dale, also a bylaw question. The removal of, for unlawfully placed signs on public property. Again, we discussed this last meeting with the potential for that new sign law or sign bylaw coming in. I think this will be likely used a lot more often. My question is, the ones that are, it would be the 315, the per item greater than .6 meters square. So, again, if it's a mobile sign that we are removing, and that is a leased or rented property, who would that bylaw attach to, and how would that be enforced? So, and again, I'm saying, say, a business rented that out. We go and confiscate it, and the owner of the sign comes and asks for it back. Do they have to pay that fine in order to retrieve their property, or is it up to the business owner?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So, I don't know if committee recalls, but when the sign bylaws was being discussed, there was a requirement to have on, on the sign, like these portable signs, for example, the sign name company. So, the bylaw staff or building staff, depending on whether it's on public property or private property, would contact the landowner to re, the, let the person who owns the sign to remove it. So, the first thing that, that what both bylaw, whether it's through bylaw or through building, they will make an attempt to try and get the person to comply. So, you know, taking the sign away and removing it, and the person having to pay to get it back, that's sort of, you don't do that unless you've tried to do it in a more proactive manner. You don't want to just automatically find somebody. You want to work with people to try to get them to comply.
Okay. Now, my, and my question with that was, again, because they are the owners of the signs, I, I would, I'm glad to hear that they're going to be contacted first, or them alongside the, whatever business they're, they have the agreement with, just so that they have the awareness to come get it off if it's not, if it's in violation. So, thank you, Mr. Chair and Director Dale.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Chair Patrieva. Just, just another, another thing, a number that jumped up, is oversized overweight load permits, inspection fees, both overtime and regular hours, goes from $235 to $365 for a change of $130. Again, one of those 30 or 35% changes in fees and a, and a big number when it comes to this sort of thing. Is there, is there, can I get an explanation on what exactly that is, or how, what's the frequency of these charges?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the counselors.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the councillors. So an oversized load permit would be for, you know, a contractor, an individual who's trying to transport some oversized load, if you will, or object, you know, it could be like a, maybe someone's moving a house or a large portable or something that would trigger an oversized load on a roadway. So we have to look at that. And I think what we're looking at when we looked at a lot of our fees is trying to look at better cost recovery for the time it takes for this type of, these types of inspections. So a lot would go into this type of inspection. We'd have to do an assessment of, you know, what roads this oversized load would take, look into, you know, how much does it weigh. So it's not very straightforward and does take time. So, I mean, I think that's what we're trying to do here is look at, you know, this is really the time it would take to do it and that, this is what we should be charging, so.
Okay. And if I may, another question. What, what's the consequence for failing to obtain that fee or that inspection?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, it, it could be different components of it. It could, it could be a safety issue, like a lot of times with oversized loads, they could be very high. I mean, if somebody doesn't, you know, map this out properly, they could be connecting on overhead hydro wires. So, you know, there's issues with heights of loads, there's issues with weights of loads as it relates to the MTO and they have restrictions for certain, you know, size loads and things like that. So consequence wise, it could vary. You know, if somebody doesn't get a permit, it, it really could result in a number of different problems.
And thank you for that answer. And I, I guess where I'm going is do we have a, a penalty or do we have a failure to obtain a permit penalty? Should we be looking at that perhaps in the future?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. It's a good point. I know we would typically rely on like MTO and, and other agencies that have jurisdiction for that type of enforcement, but that's definitely something we can take back and look at internally. Is there, is there an option for that as well?
All right. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. And then, thank you, committee, for, for your questions there. I've got a couple too. First one dealing again with, and probably to Ms. Dale, with signs and sign bylaw and that being fresh in our memory and, and a couple inquiries by residents. So, you know, we're seeing these, the proliferation of these signs on telephone poles, property guys, you need a bed, you name it, it's up there. So noticing on this, it says removal fee for unlawfully placed signs on all public property. So less than 0.6 meters, $105 per sign. So they've got 50, 60, 100 signs. So what's the likelihood that we're going to get $10,000 out of these people? Because there's time and effort going to be put in to take these things down and also call them to say, this is a practice out of town business that we don't condone. So, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So first of all, the bylaw officers would try and work with the applicants to take the signs down, but they could if the person is difficult.
Okay.
Try, try and charge, you know, more per sign. Probably the likelihood of us collecting that amount of money is probably very low.
Okay. Because see, as quick as these come down, they go back up. So I think we need to be diligent there. There's a revenue stream. Now, a question to Ms. McKay with respect to rec programs. None of them are increasing. So we've got the little caveat here that everything's going to go up 2%. So wages are going up, hydro's going up, costs are going up, but the fee isn't going up. Wondering why.
To you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to look to Sarah, the Associate Director, to comment on that because she worked with the staff on these program fees.
Thanks. To you, Mr. Chair. The rec programs are calculated using a fee calculator to determine the direct cost recovery. So they're based on things like instructor costs, program supplies. It's not a 2% increase, it's done a little bit differently. So that's why you'll see them not going up because they are direct cost recovery.
But isn't, isn't the employees' cost going up to deliver the program based on?
So the rec programs are contracted out to third parties to deliver. Our employees facilitate, they don't typically deliver them.
Don't typically do this. Okay. So then, then follow up question to that is probably it's along the same line as the workshops then?
The museum is the same model, correct?
Okay. Excellent. Now, one other question with respect to that. So, and I thought Councillor Russell might have jumped on this, but, so Pioneer Day, adults five bucks, child's five bucks, family of two adults and two, oh, two or more, there's the value. Okay. See, Councillor McClellan, I got caught too. Didn't read in the parentheses. I saw two, 220. Where's the deal? Never mind. Head flagged. So, any other questions? I see none. So, receiving file report, FN 22-19, 2020 fees and charges. Approve the proposed 2020 fees and charges as outlined in Appendix A, but to Councillor Minjima's question, if we need to increase these, we can change the bylaw throughout the year. Adopt the revised fees and charges bylaw as attached as Appendix B to come into effect on January 1st, 2020 and repeal bylaw 2019-04. We will require a mover for this motion. Councillor Minjima? All those in favor? Any opposed? And that's none and that's carried? And I would like to say thank you very much for getting this report at budget time and coming into effect January 1st rather than us doing it in April and coming through halfway. So we're making, we're making progress. So that's excellent. We are now considering item 7.2, introduction of the 2020 operating budget. Our CAO, Michael Kirkopoulos, will be providing us a presentation. Knowing you have a number of slides there, Mr. Kirkopoulos, you present them as you see fit. No pressure.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to be before members of council and good evening, members of council. This is our 2020 operating budget introduction and as Chair Patrieva highlighted, there are 75 slides. I will definitely try to go through them fairly quickly. I will keep my comments brief on some of those slides that are fairly self-explanatory so that I can get through all 75 in a decent amount of time. So a little bit of an overview in terms of the agenda for this evening, a little bit of a budget recap. As you can see there, we highlight value for tax dollar, a little bit of the setting of the fiscal stage is really what the first part of the presentation will be. And then, as we look towards 2020, some of our budget planning, key elements as well as priorities and things that have really shaped what we're going to have before you and be presenting next week and the week after. So operating budget overview. The operating budget, as we've said a number of times, really is, you know, provides the services, funds the services that residents rely on every day. Things, we talked earlier about the importance of snow clearing, we talked about firefighting, the maintenance of roads and parks. So not the capital stuff we talked about over the last month and a half, but really other things that are much more service based in need. I've also included recreational services and library there. Some of the things that you'll find within our operating budget are around future rehabilitation, the day-to-day maintenance of town assets, and they're really made up almost to the tune of about 50% of salaries and wages and the delivery of those services. Also programs and services that we've highlighted there, everything from grass cutting to snow removal. And within your operating budget, you'll also find things like utility costs and the things required to keep a lot of our facilities and operations moving along. So the operating budget includes what we call base adjustments within the finance realm. These are those nondiscretionary items required to maintain existing services. In the past, we've shared a number of those key quadrants that are important. When we look at service and service delivery, there's the legislated items we do, there's the mandated items we do, there's what we call the traditional things. So there's a number of traditional things municipalities do. They provide parks, they cut grass, things that aren't mandated necessarily, but that are traditional. And of course, there's those discretionary type things that we do, the things that are events, things that make communities what they are and that are equally important, but fall in that other category. The operating budget also includes those one-time operating expenditures. These are things like consulting studies, the various emergency repairs that often come up on a year-to-year basis. It includes growth elements and growth items and these are both the costs and revenues that have been added from previous years and any service level increases or changes council may have made or staff may have made and are bringing to council. And of course, oftentimes when we build facilities or any other sort of capital project, there is associated operating impacts as a result of those capital projects. Some of those are the cost of borrowing and some of it is just the general operations and maintenance of those capital elements. Every year, I think we try to share for council and by virtue of that, the community, what we call those uncontrollable versus controllable or uncontrollable versus discretionary. And you've got a list there of just some of the items. And while I think they're categorized as uncontrollable, of course, we could look at cutting, you know, existing staff, we could look at things like that and I don't say that flippantly. I say that just to highlight that while they're uncontrollable, there's things in there that are difficult for us to address when we look at bringing budgets forward. Things like, you know, the negotiated settlement, you know, sometimes we refer to it as cost of living increase, but it's really a negotiated settlement through our QP union for a lot of our staff and that's been 1.5 for the last number of years. We are heading into a negotiation in 2020 for the next three to four years and we anticipated being around that same level. Of course, there's just the changes to payroll and insurance and statutory requirements that often increase incrementally, EI, CPP, WSIB, of course, the inflation elements that you see listed there. And then jumping to the other side of the ledger here, you know, what we deem discretionary. We always have an ability to look at level of service, response times, the programs we offer, as I highlighted earlier, and our maintenance standards. There are minimum maintenance standards that we have to adhere to. However, I would say and suggest, you know, whether it's roads or facilities, beautifications, parks, the town of Lincoln does provide a very good level of service and I think we hear that every time we have a snowstorm and every time we're dealing with certain elements of the way we respond to our residents. External professional services, you've heard me say on a number of occasions, almost as much as we have a revenue issue, not an expense issue, just the complexity of the legal items that we deal with now on a, on a more regular basis than we ever have before. And I know I've been in front of you more times, I think, in the last six months on legal cases and legal matters than I have probably in the previous number of years. Consulting falls under there. And of course, the last two, professional development and training, which historically we haven't funded to, to a huge level. We've incrementally tried to increase those at a very small rate. And our ABCs, our agencies, boards and commissions, ones that we don't necessarily have the same amount of control over that come to us for assistance, they leverage some of our dollars in order to get benefits to other elements of what they do. And just the agreements we have with some of our service clubs that, again, we've talked about over the years. So a little bit of a budget recap for 2019. This chart is really a breakdown of where expenses are from a category standpoint. Fairly typical in what you'd see in most municipalities. However, the yellow part, which is about 50%, is salaries, wages and benefits. If you look to most communities, that ranges from 60 to 75% of, of most budgets, most operating budgets, our salaries, wages and benefits. And that's been one of those historical trends that we've looked back to a number of municipalities, both small and large. So the distribution of taxes in this often is the area we spend a lot of time talking to you about, that residents often talk to us about taxes. At the end of the day, the tax bill says the town of Lincoln on it. However, we are the agency group, the level that distributes and collects taxes for Niagara Region, our school boards, as well as the town of Lincoln. And the breakdown you see there, school board accounting for 13% of the taxes, Niagara Region for a little over 50% at 51 and about a third being the town of Lincoln or 36%. So property assessment, tax base and, and property taxes, all things that impact what people see at the end of the day, what people pay at the end of the day. And so this slide really, you know, I think highlights in, in, in some way and tries to highlight just the, the challenges with that and the difference. We have a lot of people moving from a lot of other municipalities to our communities and we have people who have been here for a long period of time. I think they look at their property assessment, they look at what they're paying versus a larger place and there's often those comparisons. And I think what this slide, you know, looks to do is really look at, you know, if you distribute $5 million in, in business over a tax base in Toronto versus a tax base in Lincoln, you see the impact to our respective budgets. At the end of the day, building a road in Toronto costs about the same money as it does building a road in the town of Lincoln. Building a facility, operating programs, camps, admission to museums, running museums and so forth, costs around the same amount of money, whether you're in Toronto or Lincoln. It's just the, our ability to spread that cost of doing business changes based on the amount of residents we have. So not an easy story to tell. The whole assessment conversation is also a difficult one. Council, I've often said, could have 0% increases and even small negative increases and you'd still be hit with increase in taxes if you're a taxpayer because your assessment is going up and that multiplier effect that happens. So that's really what this slide is trying to say. I think it's a message that we need to continue to share with our community, to share with our residents. So I think what dovetails to that is when we talk percentages, you know, I've highlighted here, it, sometimes I think it's misleading comparing community to community. And that happens both within the Niagara context and I'd suggest even outside of the Niagara context. Again, we have people that, you know, look to us and say, well, you know, I've got a 2% increase or a 1% increase or whatever the number is. Those numbers, and we've highlighted just some municipalities from a comparative standpoint in terms of what 1% looks like. And as you can see there, 1% in Lincoln is about a little under $165,000. In St. Catherine's, that 1% is close to $1 million. In Niagara Region, a little over $3.5 million is 1%. In Hamilton, it's closer to 6.7 million is 1%. So oftentimes we hear that St. Catherine's is looking at a 3% or 4% increase. Well, that's actually a, you know, close to a $4 million increase on their budget where Lincoln is looking at, you know, a similar increase and, and that's about 500,000 or 600,000. So again, from the perspective of Lincoln, 1% for Lincoln is only $164,909 on the base budget. I think this next slide also is an important slide and, you know, as we've said here, our tax bills are comprised of three agencies. So when you consider Lincoln's portion on the overall tax bill, and I highlight the overall tax bill, at the end of the day, what's at the bottom and what one has to pay. If we use last year as an example and we use that 7.29 and you look at that from the perspective of 0.36 or what we're responsible for, the overall tax increase from a Lincoln perspective was 2.62. And of course, everyone knows when we look at our budgets, we look at blended rates, we look at our portion, within that is also the special infrastructure levy and a number of other variables. So not an easy story necessarily to tell, but an important story to tell if you're looking at the bottom and what we pay and what the overall percentage is, not one-third of our piece, here is what the actual number is. And so I, I thought it was important to share that with council as well. A little bit of further budget analysis, looking at 2019, when you look at, you know, what comprised that 7.29 and you take into account our ABCs, the capital budget levy, collective agreements and the special infrastructure levy. And even if you were going to look at just our number without any other calculation, our, our portion of the operating was 3.79 in terms of those other elements and we haven't our portion of the operating was 3.79 in terms of those other elements, and we haven't taken into account all the other uncontrollable elements. But again, you know, I'm trying to find, I think, different ways to tell counsel, and to show counsel, and to show the community what comprises our budgets every year. So again, value for tax dollar. This is a little bit around resident satisfaction and service expectation. We ask residents how they feel about the level of service they're getting, how they feel about the type of service they're getting, and here's a little bit of that data and information, both trending in the right area. 82% of folks believe we're in that fair and excellent category, which is where we want to be, and more than half our residents support maintaining and/or enhancing services. Again, an important slide here in terms of what comprises $1 and where that comes from, and as you can see there, that's broken out into the various pieces. So this slide highlights last year's blended rate, which was 3.7%, and what that means on a per hundred thousand dollar basis for each home. So we've highlighted a house that's $450,000 or $575,000, and what that meant in terms of a tax increase. Similarly, this slide tries to, I think, apportion that to what it means on a per-week basis, and tries to put it into the context of, you know, how much does it cost to order one small coffee per week in terms of all the citizen services, citizen-facing services that our residents receive? So every year, we show you this slide. This is a slide that is trending, I would suggest, in a way that isn't necessarily good news. It is changes to provincial funding dating back to 2007, primarily our Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, and every year, that has been going down for the last few years, it's been going down by about 15%. And so you see, we're at about $260,000 for 2020. So this trend means we're making up that gap. Last year, we received $305,000. So again, when you start to look at what 1% means, a $50,000 or $60,000 increase year over year starts to add up. This slide overlays to that OMPF funding chart that is going down our relative number of households, which is going up. And so just a slide showing that gap in terms of provincial housing versus the amount of residents that we service through households. So a little bit about Lincoln today, tomorrow, and into the future. A lot of these statistics we've shared with you in terms of just demographics and trends. This comes from our census and the various growth projections we have. I've often talked about the 90 very diverse and different services that as a municipality we provide, and, you know, council has that incredibly difficult role with staff to balance affordability with service delivery levels. So again, just a small sample of those 90 programs and services on an annual basis, and I think sometimes it's startling when you look at some of these, I think, data snapshots. 2,300 water samples, 21,000 kilometers of winter road activities happening, over 1,900 transit pickups, you know, going through the list there, 117,000 square feet of recreational facilities to operate, our museum programming, number of bylaw complaints, building permits, unique page views, et cetera. So just a snapshot into the amount of services we provide and the diversity of those services. So now, moving a little bit to the part of the presentation that focuses on the future and where we're at. Community growth, what is it and why? Over the last few presentations, I've shared with council, a little bit about our construction value, a little bit about what we're seeing. We've often talked about development and what does that mean, new and existing infrastructure and the importance of that, and just the change, I think, in people's expectations. I mean, you know, active transportation, what people expect and demand of us has changed. Parks, our recreational programs and festivals, you know, we've done a great job, council's done a great job in investing in these, and as a result, I think we hear fairly regularly, people had a great time at such and such an event, and, you know, really proud that we're doing X and we're doing Y, and Christmas lights in this area. I heard it this morning at a breakfast about Christmas lights, again, in various parts of the community, Vineland, for instance, and how people were happy to see that. And so I think there's an, it's become almost an expectation that people have that we're going to continue to provide these services. And so community growth, more than just development growth, community expectations oftentimes drive our budgets as well. You've seen this slide here, talking about where construction value was, for example, in 2009, so 10 years ago, we were at about $29 million, and for a number of years averaging significantly below where we have been over the last number of years. And when you look at the last term of council and into this term of council, I think last time I was in front of you, I presented that we were close to half a billion dollars in building construction activity, and so that's a huge number when you take that into the context of the services we provide. So a little bit about construction value and service demands, and what that looks like and the various elements of that. So new construction speaks for itself, the infrastructure required to support it, what that means is more people, tourists, and then there's a service demand piece that goes along with that. So moving on to taxes and trends, probably one of the slides that I like presenting the best is this one around affordability, and you'll see why I say that, looking at the next slide that's coming. But historically, we've been at the right level of this affordability indicator in terms of property taxes as a percentage of household income. And I know, over the years, we've had conversations on, is this an appropriate metric, is it not? It is what municipalities measure themselves on. And the slide on the other part of the chart here does show when you add water and sewer rates and taxes together, where we stack up against others. So second lowest and fourth lowest respectively, again, important elements, not the only indicator we look at, because of course, we have a number of residents in our community, whether they're seniors and others that do live on fixed incomes, and so the conversation is beyond just affordability, but it is an important indicator to know how we stack up with others. You know, and when you look at others, small, large, ones that I think sometimes we think have a great tax base to support various investments, property taxes as a percentage of household income outside Niagara, you see how we still rank amongst the lowest on that comparator list that oftentimes is thrown out there. And so we take this information from other presentations, from provincial groups that present this. And so when you look at, you know, the Burlingtons, the Haltons, and others, their taxes as a percentage of household income, really compare to where Lincoln is at. Another good slide in terms of property taxes and our ranking, and this is, again, not based on income, so different than the affordability slides I just showed you, this is not based on income. So irrespective of income and assessment, whether that's a $100,000 house, a $400,000 house, or a $600,000 house, our value, if you were to insert it into a property tax calculator across the context of Niagara, we are still below the average of $563 per 100,000 across the region, and again, we're on the right end of this chart. You don't want to be above that yellow line necessarily when you're making comparisons and talking to your community about the services we provide and are they affordable. So 2020, some trends impacting our budget, things I mentioned earlier in the presentation, so I won't go over those. Of course, climate change is impacting how we do things, we think about just what's happening along our own waterfront. Minimum maintenance and preventative maintenance standards I mentioned earlier, community financial and asset sustainability, other key points. So trends impacting our operational budget, continued from the previous slide. Of course, again, with the different services we offer, there's sometimes increased project management needs or project management expertise that we're relying on, ongoing legislative and regulatory changes, and despite, I think, senior levels of government looking at changing that, that change hasn't happened yet. So we continue to face just the constant change, the constant influx of legislation and regulatory changes that need to be made. Of course, people want access more and more, people want information faster, quicker, we're getting busier, and so there's just all challenges. We've often heard about the importance of resident health and those early childhood indicators, we've heard about the social determinants of health around this table in various presentations, inclusion, diversity, all the elements that, again, just impact the way we do our work, and that are important elements of what we do. And of course, you know, we talk about being investment-ready, we talk about prosperity and addressing, you know, our tax base and increasing it. We need to have, you know, people that can welcome investors and businesses into the community, and we need to be able to respond to those. So council priorities, over the last few presentations, I've shared with you a little bit about where we're at, and we will be before you, finalizing some of the key actions that I think council wants to see coming out of these, but I thought I'd include them in this presentation as well, and what are some of those strategic objectives that council in principle has agreed to. There, of course, there will be work on top of the day-to-day work to achieve some of these goals and objectives, and so when you look at, you know, to be a welcoming community for people, fresh ideas, and businesses, you know, what does that mean? So economic inclusion, becoming a talent magnet, how do we continue to keep and attract good employees like we already have, but continue to keep them here to deliver the services you want? Transparency and effective governance are important topics, and so what does that look like in that open-for-business approach? Similarly, with connected, we talk about what people are really valuing in our community. It is those opportunities to get together at cultural events and community initiatives. So what does that look like? We talked about the importance of environmental stewardship, mobility and transportation options, and what that looks like. And of course, you know, we have a housing task force internally around looking at diversified housing options. Similar with our focus around vibrancy and creating a healthy and prosperous community, you see highlighted there, strategic objectives, a focus on agricultural innovation and excellence, community engagement, tourism that you're going to hear about more next week, and our economic potential. And then the fourth being resiliency, and again, we highlight some of those elements of strategic objectives and goals we have under each of those, and what that looks like. So some of the budget pressures and challenges, planning for that progress, you see here, again, some statistics that I've shared with you, the importance of looking at each of our service delivery options. The second point there, sustainability of our volunteer fire service, that continues to be a focus. It is incredibly cost-effective to have a volunteer fire service, and so you'll see in the coming presentations when we talk about some of the budgetary impacts. For instance, we have a two-hour call-out versus a one-hour call-out versus what a lot are doing is a three-hour call-out, that two-hour call-out does cost us a little bit, but it allows the sustainability of the service, and it's a small investment, and something that last year's budget accounted for about 50% when that came into effect, a little less than 50%, probably 30%. So there's a full-year effect of that, but it is important in terms of the sustainability of offering a volunteer fire service. Maintaining facilities and programming is a driver, and of course, as you know, as I've told you, the approval of the capital has an impact to operating as well. Human capital and responding to regulatory changes, just again, some statistics there. Things from an HR standpoint, we always look at, pay equity remains important, legislation, compression, AODA, WIMSS. I could give you an entire presentation on the human capital and legislative and regulatory complexities and changes we deal with almost on a monthly basis, but this really highlights just some of those impacts and what they mean. And again, some of these impacts are not necessarily always increasing, but they just change the way we do business. Long-term financial sustainability, we've talked about this. We've talked about climate adaptation and sustainable revenue sources and what those look like, and again, some statistics in terms of the various indices. I think everyone often looks at inflation, but as municipalities, some of them look at the consumer price index, some look at the construction price index, some look at the municipal price index, all various indices. I think at the end of the day, what they're telling you is anywhere between 2% to 5% to 6% increases you're finding on various things. We probably see a little bit of less of that in terms of what this government is doing, at least in the current timeframe, as it relates to some of the utility costs around hydro, some of those have stabilized a little bit more. But then you see gas, you see some of the other things that continue to increase in the high single digits, all things that impact all of us. So again, what helps shift that residential tax base is really filling up our industrial lands, attracting commercial and institutional organizations to move their businesses here, and that is some of the focus for our economic development group in terms of looking at that residential to non-residential tax base. So general resources and other pressure, of course, I won't get into these, but things that you've heard. So what do we hear from the community? We had a presentation a number of weeks ago on this, but some summary points here. Strong focus on road investment, and I think, you know, looking at the capital budget, council continues to invest in roads and will continue to be investing in roads. Traffic planning, the importance of mitigation measures in our neighborhoods. Infrastructure, you know, we look at parks, green spaces, our stormwater sites, our swim pond, investments that you've made through capital, maintaining facilities, and of course, as I mentioned earlier, active transportation. Another thing, I mean, and one of the things I think that goes without saying, but it's important to say, taxpayer affordability and balance. I think residents will always tell you they want more services, but there's a balance between what residents can afford and pay for, and what we feel is appropriate, what you feel is appropriate as council, and what that balanced investment looks like. So just some budget drivers that you'll hear more about as we go through each of the departments. You know, I think we're always tweaking our budgets, we're always looking at actuals versus budgeted elements and always making tweaks. So as it relates to council's budget, specifically around, just, you know, we continue to make, again, small incremental increases around enhanced outreach and resident meetings, what does it cost to do those? Should we be doing more or less? We budget for those. A little bit of money on the council priorities, development, and rollout. CAO's office, some of the budget drivers and areas of focus, and when I say budget drivers and areas of focus, that doesn't just mean increases. We are looking in areas, and I'll highlight it, in community services around cemeteries where we can find additional revenues. So I don't want council to look at the slide and assume it's all about increases. We are looking at offsetting costs or offsetting what may be increases. But the CAO's office, so the program areas include economic development, communications, government relations, strategic planning and HR, and just general oversight. So really, the largest driver, and you'll, again, be receiving more information next week, is AFTE-ASK in economic development and tourism, and we'll be presenting that and sharing a copy of the business case with council. That is really the driver. And again, just some general small tweaking that you'll see minimal amounts on our operating budgets, just to account for the cost of actually doing business. And of course, our CIP contributions, Mr. Danny will tell you we should be putting more in, as will Ms. Dale and Ms. Trawala, but again, we want to put money in the bank, it's just how quickly and how much can we put in the bank, and that is something you're also going to hear from me in terms of the state of our reserves and other things. We want to put money in the bank, it's just because it's an important thing to do and essential for our long-term well-being, just how quickly can we afford to do that? So this budget does continue to invest in our CIPs and put money away so that when people come to us, we have money to give them. Legislative services, again, some slight drivers and areas of focus, our Citizen Advisory Committee, enhanced service to council, and the review of the services offered, and of course, some records management challenges that we're playing catch-up on. Again, a lot of these, you'll hear a lot more detail when we actually start getting into the numbers, but wanted to give council just a general overview of some of the things that you'll be hearing about in each department. Finance and admin, so cybersecurity and safety, agenda and meeting management, records management. management systems. I think we're looking again at using some of our modernization dollars, but in other cases, some existing dollars and leveraging them together to see can we find savings and efficiencies in the way we do things. IT governance review and strategy, as per my previous comment, is really where we're focused in that area. So this is the, this is often the area of finance and admin that we get questions on. General government, this is really that area within Terry's department that captures things like where we put the money for, from senior levels of government. So our OMPF funding, and again, you'll see a pressure in that area because that money's come down, so we're getting about 60 grand less. There's a decrease sometimes in those one-time revenue offsets that come in and outstanding tax arrears. So four or five years ago, we had more people not paying their taxes and we've been diligent in collecting taxes, which means we don't get as much interest or we don't charge as much interest and we actually get less money in. So Lincoln Fire, as I highlighted, there's, the, the pressure there comes specifically from some of our salaries and wages and just the number of training hours that are mandatory now. Public Works, climate adaptation, some of our quality assurance work, just the cost of materials, sand, salt. There's often averages that we use to purchase these things. Some years, we go through those quickly. It really depends on the number of storms and issues we have. Of course, continued investment in active transportation and road safety, we've heard from council on numerous occasions, numerous times, to continue increasing this, this line item around traffic calming, crosswalk painting implementation and so forth. And so you'll see more of that and hear more about that as well. Community services, so always looking at the materials we need, always looking at the programs we offer, always looking at increased revenues. So some good, good news here, again, as I said earlier, around increased revenues, cemetery operations and, and what that looks like. Planning and development, again, some of the drivers and areas of focus for planning and development really are how do we respond to that projected growth? Looking at, again, kind of the timing, Kathleen was trying to share with us a, a chart earlier when SMT met around what is that planning and building continuum, when people, oh, sorry, when people pay fees at the beginning versus the end and all the times in between. And so from a year to year, you'll see some ebbs and flows in that. And, and of course, again, an area of focus, I mean, there, Kathleen and her group are, are always looking at planning and building user fees. Some legislation guides that, but an important area in terms of where we recoup a, a lot of fees. So next steps and considerations for council, and I've only got one more slide left. It's actually 58, I thought it was 75, but it obviously got cut down. Senior manager team, budget planning has been extensive. You know, I share that with council because we have spent a, a number of hours going through the budget. We are not obviously done in terms of where we'll be at and what we're presenting on Monday. We continue to look at efficiencies, where we can do stuff differently. We continue to look at council priorities, how do we support them, capital projects. And as I've said, some of the pressures there, if, if we're to theme them, there's just a general cost of doing business that is increasing slightly. And so you will hear us talk more about the departmental operating budgets in greater detail on Monday, December 2nd. We will continue to have operational budget deliberations. I suspect you'll be giving us direction or guidance following that meeting in terms of other things you want to see, areas you may want us to come back with, possibly decreases in certain areas. We want to be in front of you, again, December 11th, with our operating budget, address any questions, provide you any other detail or analysis you want. Our hope is for approval of what we've had in front of you, our water and wastewater rates that we dealt with tonight, the capital that we dealt with a few weeks ago and operating with the anticipated December 16th ratification. I did suggest SMT that if we need to have another meeting with council that we would look at December 18th possibly. I think that's on hold, but we're also looking at December 23rd. I almost got tossed out of the room when I said Monday, December 23rd, and by council's reaction, I think you'd feel the same way the rest of the team does. But we definitely can include more meetings should council want them, but this is our tentative date right now, our tentative dates that are before you. So I can definitely answer any questions council may have. That is the end of my presentation, Mr. Chair. So I hope I tried to keep it brief.
Okay. Counselor Manjima.
Thank you, Chair Patria. Mr. CAO, a couple of weeks ago, you sent out an email, I think it was from you, about some funding that's going to be coming, and it's broken up into rural and smaller municipalities and larger municipalities to look at efficiencies in service. So have we, we haven't talked a lot about that, but do we see that impacting our operating budget this year? Or what do we see as next steps?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, we're definitely, I, I know Terry and, is working on those applications. I think Shannon volunteered herself to facilitate and assist with that application process. And so we are working on those applications now. I, I think some of the initiatives we have, council, obviously, I think we would hope to try to offset, you know, we're looking at customer service and some other things that we've talked to you about. And so I think, you know, they're, they're small, they're small kind of studies, and that's really what that fund is set up for. It's really set up to look, to, to have studies, not necessarily to offset additional costs, but some of those consulting costs that we would look at around customer service, around some of the other elements that we would look to do. And so I think, if anything, they'll be small. I don't know the level of success. It is a very aggressive timeline that the province has set, and, and I think they want some quick wins coming out of it. And so, I mean, our hope is to continue to keep you updated on that. But in terms of success and impact, it'll be small and I'm cautiously optimistic we'll be successful because our asks, I think, won't be large. And so I, I don't know if Terry has anything further to add as the one dealing with our provincial reps on this, so she may have some additional comments, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair, just in terms of whether it would have an impact on the ap- operational budget as it appears now. We haven't budgeted for any of the studies that we're applying for. It's all new ones that we're going to be doing, so it would be net new projects.
Thank you. So that, can I ask a clarification?
Yeah, go ahead.
Question, please. So that was my next question, was whether the funding, one of the criteria was that we have something in our budget that we have sets, what services we're planning to look at or, but, but is, is that part of the criteria? It doesn't sound like it is.
Through you, Mr. Chair, it, it, it is not. And, and I can tell you, council, looking at the application, it really is a, a two or three-page application. It's fairly basic. And I don't say that in, in, in a negative way. It, it, it almost reads as an expression of interest. And again, I think what the government wants to do with a small pot of money is look to municipalities to try to do some innovative things with, at low cost. And so, you know, I think we do have a little bit of, of money. I mean, I use customer service as an example. I think we've set aside a few thousand dollars to look at customer service, definitely not enough. And so we would need the new monies to do a, a customer service strategy, but it isn't conditional on us having money in the budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the CAO. Thank you very much for the presentation. The one, a couple of things I keyed on. One is on slide 57, which talks about significant operating budget pressures for 2020, which I'm very excited to see coming up next week with the actual line-by-line item. But it's the investing in our people, training, learning development. I think that is a fabulous thing to point out, that again, by focusing on the development of our own staff, again, it can only bring us much greater things, improvement, staff culture, the whole bit. So I'm excited to see that in there. But I also wanted to know, going back to slide 28, which focused on the builds. There you go. I'm wondering if you could just give some insight. So permits issued for residential units significantly lower in the last 10 years, 28, but total permits issued is still quite high. I'm wondering if you can just give me some information on the significance of those two and why that is only 28?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I definitely have some comments to make, but I know Director Dale is, is eagerly wanting to answer that question first. Kathleen's actually just scrolling to page 28. I think I whipped through it a lot quicker.
So Counselor, through you, Mr. Chair, maybe just while Kathleen's analyzing the slide, I think what you're asking is relative to the number of permits for residential units versus total permits issued and how those numbers don't necessarily
Meet the trends from prior years.
Meet the trends from previous years.
It just seems very typo-ish. Not, not saying that it is, but it seems odd.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, probably the last, the last couple of years, if you look at the construction value, are significantly higher than if we looked at the previous tenure average. So there's been a huge increase in the value of permits as well as the number of permits issued for residential, some commercial, some mixed use. As an example, there was a permit issued recently for the new development on Green Lane. So when you throw that one in, it really pushes up the value.
But would that, would that permit?
Oh.
It's 28. Would that permit count as one residential unit or would it be all the units inside? All right, it has to be.
It has to be.
So through you, Mr. Chair, a very good question. Let us go back and, and look at that slide. And so Kathleen is saying it's a typo.
That's what I felt. I, I had, I had an inclination.
So I appreciate your, your attention to detail, council. We'll definitely provide you an updated slide here.
Okay.
I don't think it should read 28.
Unless those are quite, yeah, quite nice houses, quite large.
I'll have to look at an older, older slide. It probably just in the copy over did that. So, good question, for sure.
Any other questions, committee? I have one with respect to that slide, Mr. Kacopoulos. And again, it says 2018. So the next slide shows us 2019. So are we going to update that slide or is that, we updated it, but we didn't update the header? But I think that looks, I think that's reminiscent of the slide we saw last year. So wondering if we can get the 2019 numbers, see where we are.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I will let Terry speak to where we pulled the data from, but it isn't a, so there, this one isn't an error and it should read 2018, but Terry can speak to the, the frequency with which these numbers are pulled by the BMF study.
Thank you. Through the chair. So we get the numbers from the BMA study, which we get it from the region. In previous years, we were able to have it in time from the region's treasurer. It's going to be released within the next few days or within the next few weeks. Once we have it, we'll share it with everyone.
We'll update it. Okay, okay, very good. Thank you. Counselor Brene.
Thank you, Chair Patria. Through you to the CAO. At least I'll start off with the CAO. So this isn't specifically about budget, but when we talk about budget pressures and then we talk about available industrial land, I recall a year ago, there was considerable discussion going on about businesses that were operating in our municipality, that were operating under the guise of agricultural-based, but operating commercial businesses. And, you know, when we talk about driving revenue and opportunities, I'm just wondering, and I know Mr. Dan is not here from bylaw tonight, but I'm just wondering where we might be with that, because I, I know there was considerable discussion for a long period of time in the last term, and I haven't heard anything recently. And I'm just, I'm just, it just raises a spockian eyebrow in, as to whether we have pursued that, because that is, that is revenue. And we've got, let's face it, we knew at the time, there was many, many people who weren't paying the proper business, commercial tax under the guise of agricultural businesses. So I just throw that out there.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think Director Dale can speak to a little bit of that from the perspective of bylaw and, and planning. And I don't know if Mr. Danny has anything to add as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to answer the previous question. The number of building permits was 528.
What did he say? Five twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Five twenty-eight. Boom.
Up to the end of September. In regards to bylaw enforcement, you are correct. There are probably some businesses out there that aren't paying the appropriate taxes. However, when those come to our attention, we do, through consultation with our tax department, get NPAC involved.
So through you, Mr. Chair, I think maybe just a dovetail on, on what Kathleen is saying. So we haven't necessarily been maybe as proactive in going out and doing that, but duly noted, council. I think, you know, as we look at just our, our work planning, I think sometimes, you know, we, we're, we're taking the approach that, you know, when these things are, when we stumble upon them or stumble across them, we're addressing them. But I think, you know, I hear council loud and clear, it's a revenue opportunity. We've talked about it in the past, and so staff can go back and look at how we do more of that.
So through you, Mr. Chair. I, I do agree with Ms. Dale's comment that I do believe at the time when this was, it seemed to be a big issue on the front burner, it was because we were hearing written and verbal complaints from residents, maybe competing businesses who were saying, hey, I'm paying my share of commercial tax and why is this guy getting away with it? So I, I guess what I'm hearing is, you know, we're going out there, we're identifying it when we hear about it, but we're not maybe hearing about it. And I, and I certainly would be in that camp, that I haven't heard anything. But when I see this slide, it just kind of refreshes it, and so I wanted to bring it up for discussion. So I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chair Brene, because I had a conversation with former Counselor Thompson about this very issue the other day. He's got a, you know, a bee in his bonnet over that. And it's, he, you know, he doesn't begrudge people operating business and, and, you know, where they're operating it, but, you know, they need to pay their fair share of property tax. And we've got to be diligent on this. And we've got to start going after these SCOF laws and, you know, operate your business, but pay your fair share. Needs to be a level playing field. Mr. Kacopoulos.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate those comments, absolutely. And Mr. Danny did remind me that our business licensing process and what we're looking at bringing in will also help in address that as we go to businesses, both. Right now, we're talking about cannabis, but it, the goal is to roll that out to all businesses. And so one of the things that we'll look at specifically would be that particular piece. But duly noted, we need to be proactive earlier with bylaw.
Yes, because I'm, I'm, you know, again, if, if you're not paying your fair share of taxes, I don't think you're going to be rushing into town hall to buy a business license, right? So we know who these are, or, or, you know, we can drive around and get a look-see and then target them. So Counsel Reimer.
Just, just a
There you go.
There you are. Thank you. Just a comment to that. I realize this isn't budget-related, but just to dovetail on, on Counsel Brene, we need to tread very softly if we're going to go down that road. There, there's, there's a lot of businesses out there, and that speaks mostly to rural, not necessarily urban areas. And I think we need to pursue that. I, I agree we need to pursue it, but I think we need to be careful how we pursue it. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I, I mean, absolutely, you know, I think in my overzealous agreement to say, well, we're going to pursue it, that means we're going to go back and talk about it. And I think look at, you know, how we do that in, in an appropriate, measured, thoughtful and deliberate way.
Okay, because these continue to pop up. You know, it's just a quick drive around and you see these businesses operating in the agricultural realm, and everything from soup to nuts to trucking to, you name it. And, you know, the playing field needs to be leveled, and you can't go under the guise of secrecy. Mr. CAO.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll, I'll say it one more time. We are on it and we will be thoughtful in how we do it.
Any other questions? Inquiries? Counselor Michaelak.
Thank you, Chair Patria. Through you to Mr. Kacopoulos. Any, any latest from the region as far as how their budget process is coming, both operational and capital? What, what have they finalized? What have they, what are they looking at? Any, any discussion? Any discussion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think I will, I'll probably repeat what Counselor Foster, Regional Counselor Foster said when he was here, that they were looking at somewhere in the 5% to 7% range, but I actually, you know, I'd be remiss if I spoke for them, but I think that's definitely what he said when he was here last week, and so I think as they go through their process, you know, I think we're going to have to see where they land on those numbers. I think they're just getting into operating capital, I think as we've heard reported on a number of occasions, is a massive hill that they're dealing with right now, so I suspect that 5% to 7% is accurate according to Counselor Foster, but that's the extent of what we know from the perspective of the local.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and following up on those comments, we can't let that derail us from doing what we need to do, right? There's still, there's still local issues that we need to tackle, and you know what, this was always exhibited by past councils, is that, you know, the region number came in, whether it be high or low, and we wanted to get to this artificial number. So, I appreciate the fact that there's no number set, there's no magic number, there's no magic bullet, it's not out there, we need to do what we need to do, but we need to do it in the most cost-effective way in delivering that service regardless of what the region is doing. I serve that up for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I mean, I think that the comment I would make is, you know, we're always balancing, Counselor Mikulak, you know, how we invest money, what we use to offset tax increases. Municipalities have abilities to do a few things, I mean, we can dip into our tax reserves, we can dip into other reserves, you know, again, I think this council historically, and I know us as your team believe the importance of making sure we don't necessarily always dip into reserves to offset tax increases, there's an, you know, I use the word artificial, not in a negative way, but there's an artificial nature in doing that. I think it is important to have money tucked away, stored away, if we think about just the upswing that we are on right now, that won't continue forever, there will be needs that people that come after us, our children's children, if you think about 20, 25 years from now, what the community will look like, and so I think someone's going to look back and say, this council did a good job in putting money in the bank. But again, I think as we get into the budget process, council has a number of options and opportunities to look at the budget and the budget impact, and of course, those are at your discretion, as set out appropriately, of course, in terms of which reserves, but, you know, we do have things, we do have money in the bank, again, important things about our long-term financial well-being.
And one other, one other point, and this goes to Vice Chair Russell's question in the capital budget, so with respect to that construction value slide, maybe a little forecasting, because at some point, we're going to reach the precipice, and then we're going to be on a downslide. So, when we might project that to occur, and, you know, because the old adage, what goes up is going to come down, so, again, and we had the presentation a few years ago, and, you know, hoping to get their, you know, multi-year budget, three-year cycle out, take into account these kind of highs, got to capitalize on the highs, and, you know, stash those dollars away, because at some point, you know, the 90, the 95 services are still going to need to be delivered, but, you know, the crunch is going to come.
Through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely, I know we started in the capital budget, looking at some of that forecasting in terms of the amount of DCs come in, the amount of taxes coming in versus the expenditure we have from a capital standpoint, but I know we can, and we have started looking at what those projected developments look like out multiple years, so that we can kind of start projecting, at least internally, when is that downswing or that leveling out for a bit start, and that downswing in the amount of construction activity.
Okay, great, and I mean, again, we, the information on debt financing and projects, we asked for that slide on, you know, historical, much like this from 2009, where we were borrowing, projects that fell off, how new ones come on, just so some of the new councils get a flavor of it, it's very fluid, but, you know, we wait until those bigger projects like, you know, King Street, Ontario Street, how those drop off, and then the new ones come on, so you're constantly in a state of fluidity. So, look forward to that at the next meeting. So, receive and file the presentation of the 2020 operating budget presentation as information, it's coming from the Office of the Redundancy. Remove it for this motion. Counselor Reimer, I look to my left this time, all those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Confidential items, I see none. Staff remarks, we're all tucked out. Committee remarks? I see no further business, I call this meeting adjourned. 7:37.